All right, we'll call the meeting to order. Ms. Burns, will you do the pledge for us, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Which is one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Can I make a motion that we approve the agenda?
All right, Ms. Burns has made a motion to approve the agenda. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. George has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous. All right.
Mr. Chair, for the folks on the phone, they need to identify themselves before they vote.
Okay, well, that was, for that, that was Ken Smith and Cindy Fontana both voted in favor.
Yes, Ken Smith in favor.
Yes, Cindy Fontana in favor.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks. All right, item one, Plan B school reopening update. Dr. Hill and several others.
Yes, sir, we have a lot of staff members here. This has been a team effort, to say the least. So basically what we've done is tried to put together a slideshow that will take us through what we believe have been some key questions that have been inquired by the board, things we've run across, and try to give you the most accurate, up-to-date situation as it is at the minute. We've been updating this up to the last hour, trying to get you the most recent information. As you see across the state, this is the most difficult time to try to re-enter school, and we're trying to make the best decisions possible. And so today, we want to give you an update of where we're at as we move into next week with the teachers returning and the following week with the students. So we'll start right now with Dr. Moore is going to take us through the numbers. And as we go, Board, please, you know, we'll pause at each section and make sure we're getting all the questions that you have and making sure we're giving you the best available information.
Good afternoon, Board members. So, as you're aware, last week, we sent out a staff survey with a cutoff time of 5:00 p.m. on Sunday, August 2nd. At the time of the closeout of the survey, we had a total of 669 respondents. And this graph is representative of all the school sites that did respond. What we have here is the composite of 669 respondents. Eighty-nine percent of those who did respond stated that they planned to return with no requested accommodations. The other thirteen percent were either requesting telework or for us to review their requests for some type of accommodation. So here, we give you the breakdown of those responding. Of the 669, 385 of those respondents were teachers. And the red is representative of the eighty-five percent of those teachers who stated that they were returning without requesting any sort of accommodation. Thirty-two percent requesting their situations to be reviewed. And in that, that meant that they may have been requesting some type of accommodation. And then we had the twenty-five percent.
No, that's twenty-five's the number, seven percent.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, we did hard numbers and a percentage.
Okay, fogging glasses with, yes, thank you. So we have the hard number and the percent. So thirty-two of the 385 requesting that their situations were reviewed, which is representative of the eight percent. And then those requesting accommodations, twenty-five out of the 385 who responded, and that's the seven percent. Now, what I would like for you to make note of is that we have a total of 638 certified employees. Of the 635, thirty-eight certified, again, this is the number who responded. So when we say teacher, they're paid teacher salary. That could include lead teachers, counselors, media specialists, and so forth. So, as you can tell, every single employee did not respond to the survey. And you think about summer vacation, not everyone is checking email. We also asked principals to make personal contact with their employees if they noticed that they were not listed on the spreadsheets that we shared with them for the individual school sites.
So, Board, basically what you see, can you flip it back? I just want to add something to that real fast. Well, that's okay, I can talk for it. But basically what we've got is a sixty percent response rate that we know, so you're looking at sixty percent of the population of our certified staff that we know what they are saying they're going to commit to. Now, we're assuming that the ones who didn't answer are reporting for work because there was no contact, they didn't answer emails, and they've not been able to be get out with by principals. So that's, that's just what, that's what we're working from to date at this time.
Okay. And again, of the 669 respondents, fifty-seven of them were teacher assistants. And from that, you'll see that, eighty-two percent, and again, my glasses, pardon me, vision issues, indicated that they would be returning without requesting accommodations. One person's resigning. Those requesting accommodations, seven percent. And we have been reviewing the situations that have been brought forth to us based on medical documentation that was submitted or other requests to try and make some sound decisions as quickly as possible.
So, and Board, just to clarify, the red are the ones that meet some sort of federal or state predetermined condition. The green are the ones that are asking for their situation to be reviewed.
Yeah. And, and this includes your exceptional children, teacher assistants, reg-lead teacher assistants, and taking into account of what the job duties are for each.
Dr. Moore, how many teachers' assistants do we have? How does, what is this?
We have approximately seventy-five to eighty teacher assistants total for the district. So again, fifty-seven respondents, I think I'm accurate. Do you have that?
That's what you're looking for?
Yes, thank you. We've been looking at so many numbers. Okay, so based on the last report that was pulled, we were up, so I apologize for that, one hundred six total that are recorded on this data pool. So again, not everyone has responded. And what we've started slowly getting a trickle of from some employees, they're sending an email saying, oops, forgot, just saw my email, principal contacted me, yes, I'm planning to return, or what have you. But we've only gotten like probably a total of five of those since this information was pulled yesterday, which would not have made a significant difference in what you have here. And keeping in mind, too, that the leave options are limited. Okay, so let me not jump the gun here. So other respondents on re-entry, the two hundred thirty-four. This could include bus drivers, your office clerical staff, school treasurers, data managers, central office clerical staff, any maintenance staff who responded. So this would cover the other. And of them, two hundred thirty-four respondents, two hundred and ten are respond, are returning without requesting a review of their circumstances or requesting other accommodations. Any questions?
Just for clarification for the people that might be watching or listening. So back in the spring, there was different, several different leave options available.
Those leave options aren't, all those leave options aren't available any longer.
That is correct.
Can you explain what's available and what's not available?
Yes. What we currently have available is the leaves under the federal, what is it, Family First Coronavirus Response Act. Those two leaves are the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act and the Emergency FMLA. The Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act provides ten days at either full pay or two-thirds pay, depending on how you meet one of the six qualifying reasons. The Emergency FMLA is only available for employees who have an absence of childcare due to a closure related to COVID. And then outside of those, it would be our regular leave options that we typically have during the school year.
So that, those leaves that went away, that was no doing above staff.
Correct.
That was, that was stated, done away with those.
Correct, correct.
To highlight that point a little bit more, Mr. George. The, the big absence that you're talking about is a state of emergency leave, which was created by the State Board of Education in the spring. And that sunset with the end of the 2019, 2020 school year, which is the leave that most employees who weren't working in the spring used. So this is sort of reverting to what Congress passed in the spring as what is available, as opposed to what was available in the spring. I hope that answers your question.
It does, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The FMLA option where they're taking the leave, but there would be no pay.
Well, with the, with the Emergency FMLA, if there is an employee who has a situation where they have the absence of childcare, they are entitled, the FFCRA with the Emergency Family Medical Leave Act gives them two-thirds pay. They can use their accrued leave to take care of the other third of their pay so they can get their full pay. They are not required to do that, nor can we require them to do that. So that's how that works with, with that. That passed the Emergency Paid Sick Leave Act, which gives the ten days. The Emergency FMLA gives an additional ten weeks. Once that ten weeks is exhausted, that is done. There isn't, that leave's no longer available, and it also expires December 31st of this year.
So is it still correct that if you take the Emergency FMLA, you cannot later take the FMLA in the same year?
Correct. And presently, no one would have exhausted all of their FMLA because our calendar follows our academic year.
Okay. One more question that keeps being asked, if, if there is a case, a teacher, staff member, administrator, whatever, contracts COVID, what leave is available? What is their, how do they go, what do they go out on?
They test positive?
Yes.
My understanding is if they test positive, they would have to use their sick leave for that. The, am I, correct me if I'm wrong?
So, so, Mr. George, there, there's a possibility to use what's known as contagious sickness leave. It's in the state benefits manual. It has to be a directive from your local county health director that that individual not report to work. My understanding in Pender County is that your local health director would direct that person to isolate and not report to work. And therefore, they would qualify for contagious disease leave under the state benefits manual for the period that they are required to isolate per the health department's directive.
So along that same question, if there is not, if they go out with a contact for testing, and it comes back, they're negative, are they required to take some form of leave while they're waiting for their test results? Because test results now, I know for a fact, are taking some, up to sixteen days.
Absolutely. I think it would depend on what directive the health department gives the individual about the possible contact and exposure. Honestly, the, the best person to answer that question for you would be the, the local health department, who I believe is on the line.
They're all here.
Oh, they're here.
Yeah, we're.
They're back. That's, that's, that would be the individual who would answer that question. But the possible exposure, under the decision trees that were shared this afternoon, I believe that there would be a directive from the local health department. I just don't want to speak for them.
Mr. Yager, on our child, on our child, on our child, he's our local county epidemiologist. And I think he has a question, you want to pose a great question?
Mr. George, if you want to ask it again, or I can try to ask it.
The question was if there's a possible contact with an affected person, and we send our staff out to be tested. I was asking if there was a leave available to them other than them having to take their personal leave. What, and he said that was dependent on the health department's directive for the, for the person.
So I can't speak specifically to any sort of leave that would be available. If anyone is tested, though, they are given instructions that they are to remain isolated at home until those test results do come back. So at this current time, the labs that we're sending out are coming back within about forty-eight to seventy-two hours, but that's always subject to change based on the lab and how many, the number of tests that they're receiving.
So that, that timeframe has changed because my son, when he was tested, it was seven days.
Correct.
And then my daughter-in-law was sixteen days.
Sixteen days is quite a long time, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
I believe it was right about the end of June to about midway through July that we were experiencing that backup with LabCorp. And that was about ten to twelve days for most people. And that has been reduced to about forty-eight to seventy-two hours right now is our turnaround time with LabCorp.
That's good.
Okay, but are they, say, if we do have a staff member who goes out and they, and they're being tested, are they going to be on leave while we are waiting for the test results?
Yes, ma'am. So the, the directive I'm hearing from your resident epidemiologist is that during that period of time, they've been given a directive to quarantine. And during that quarantine, they cannot report to work, therefore, they qualify for contagious disease leave under the state benefits manual.
Yes, ma'am.
So that means that it's not affecting their personal leave?
That's correct, sir.
Okay, 'cause, what about things like workers' comp, that kind of thing? If someone claims that, if an employee claims that they got it at school?
They can certainly file a workers' comp claim. That is available. The immunity that was passed by the North Carolina General Assembly included an exemption for workers' compensation claims. The current direction that's been given by the state regarding workers' compensation claims is that if the employee believes that they have contracted COVID-19 at work and they choose to file a workers' compensation claim, they'd reduce it. The success of those claims at this point is uncertain. Nobody has really tested those waters significantly anymore. But once again, that's, I would be speculating, if I advise you, other than to say that your immunity does not extend beyond to workers' compensation claims that could be made by an employee.
Okay. Okay.
If there's no more questions about that section, we'll have Dr. Aiken just coming up. And he's going to review the instructional delivery piece of this, the numbers of virtual students, staff daycare, and athletics.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. To give you some updates in regards to the number of students that have been requesting the one-hundred percent online option, just to recap. When Governor Cooper announced that we would be going to Plan B, one of the things he added to that order was that any parent or student who wishes to have a one-hundred percent online option had to be granted that. So this is a part of that process as we've been collecting this data. What you see on the screen is our latest numbers as of 1:30 today. A total of 1,916 students have requested that option. That represents about twenty percent of our total student enrollment. Again, our elementary plan is designed to keep those students as connected to their classrooms and teachers as possible because of their age and because of the importance of some of the early learning instruction that goes on. For our middle and high school students, we are going to be utilizing the EdOptions or Virtual Academy model that we started piloting last year. And we will actually be bringing a request to buy some additional slots to you next week. We have professional development planned for Dr. Lee and her team starting Monday to begin that process. One, an additional thing that I wanted to, oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. I don't know which one it is. Cool, thank you. I apologize for the amount of information on this screen.
Can we stop and then go back?
Yes, sir.
You don't have to go back to this, but do you have any kind of breakdown of school?
Yes, sir, we do. I can actually get that for you. I didn't bring it with me. But when I get done here, I can go out and print that off and get that to you. But we do have by school for each of the grades, man. Yes, sir.
Because I was, it was shocking. It was kind of upside down what I expected. I expected the high school to be the ones that were more virtual and elementary released and totally backwards. But that's, that was interesting.
Yes, sir. Yeah, I can get that for you. Be glad to see that.
So I understand there's no cutoff date to decide to get virtual?
The way that the governor's order came down, we weren't given the discretion to tell a parent that at some point, they could not go from in-person to online. We were given the discretion because of impacts for student safety, six-foot rule, cohort assignments, that if a parent or student start online, we can ask them to stay online, which we have chosen in looking at our situation to go for a semester. But from in-person to online, the way the order was given to us, we didn't, we don't think we have an option to say, no, you must stay in person.
Well, I mean, someone may get there and decide that they don't feel safe, and...
Yes, sir, that's...
Right before, it's got to be, it's got to be terrible on all the people planning, not knowing. Right before, it's gotta be, it's gotta be terrible on all the people planning, not knowing.
And that is also exceptionally true, sir. Yes.
You might have another thousand there that don't show up.
What we have discussed is obviously if a parent was to approach us, we kind of want to work them through a cycle of counseling, making sure they understand ramifications. We do have concerns, our staff have concern about a student who is plugging along. We've developed what they're doing in person, and then they jump. Especially for our middle and high school, especially high school, you know, transitions, changes in curriculum. For our student athletes, that could present a very real issue with the way the NCAA clearinghouse works. They cannot have adapted curriculum. If they start math four, just picking a course, and then they decide to transition, we, we would have to really make sure that the NCAA considers that transition to be okay because they would be changing teachers, changing the platform. So we would want to work all of those, those parents and students and really make sure that we work through the scenario. But as Mr. Hall said, if they come and have those concerns, we certainly would never want to put them in a position of feeling that, you know, they're not safe. But we would have concerns about the gap in learning and curriculum as they go from one to the next. Absolutely, just we would. Anytime a student moves, changes schools, moves from state to state, some of those things, some, some of those same things occur.
So the, the people that are virtual, mostly high school I'm referencing now, when will they find out the courses that they're, they've been assigned?
We're, Ms. Asia Winstead and Dr. Lee have been taking the lead for that, working with our counselors. What we're doing is pulling information that was in Power School of what they had already listed. And we're in the process right now of making those transitions. We have scheduled virtual orientations for all the students, and we're looking to, we'll be doing that as part of their orientation plans next week through the middle to late next week. But our plan is to try to mimic whatever's in Power School. We will try to find the exact same option for the EdOptions. The concern will be electives. There are electives that simply cannot transfer. We don't have a virtual version to do them face-to-face. So in those cases, we'll need to sit down with the student, take a look at what our catalog is able to offer to ensure they have an elective because that's the graduation issue. You still have to have certain numbers of electives to, to graduate. So we'll have to work with those students face-to-face. So our plan would be to begin getting that information to students as part of their same orientation timeline that we have for our high school students in general.
I think there was a couple, a little bit of confusion about, there was some social media posts that went out. So a cohort, the cohorts in high school went by alphabetical order. And if you're virtual, are you assigned to the same, are you assigned to cohort also?
Only in elementary did we require that because in elementary, they are going into a specific class and following the same schedule as their in-person peers. We did not require that for middle and high. There's nothing to stop our principal from doing that, but we did not ask that because they'll be there for the whole semester. And then we will kind of reevaluate it at the winter break to see what would happen next. There will be nothing to prohibit them doing that, but it is not as significant as for our elementary students where they are participating in similar assigned peers to the same teacher, working the same weekly schedule.
So there's, some of the high schools are doing virtual open houses or sidewalk open house or orientation or whatever?
Is there anybody else on the line? I've, I've gone dead here. I can't hear.
We're here.
Same here. I can't hear the meeting.
Okay.
Mr. Riley, does that mean I'm on? Let's make sure. Okay.
Rich, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now. We just got your back.
Gotcha.
So on, so for those, say, I'm in cohort A, do I go as a virtual student? Do I go to that virtual open house?
Yeah, no, the, if, I don't know the, any of the high schools that, I'm not aware of any of the high schools that have assigned high school students to a cohort. But if they did, unless they've communicated directly with the, the parent that that's the way to pick up Chromebooks or something, we will be working with them, those students separately.
Okay.
But that, the, the school may have done that for logistical reasons, which would make a lot of sense if they, if they did. But we did not require that one way or the other. We wanted that to be a school-based process.
I mean, because you'd have the third group, for example, they would go for, there'd be two weeks. They would have no contact other than virtual.
Correct.
With high school. So...
That leads to, thank you, because that leads to the next question I had today. If you're in the third cohort in high school, you're still starting some kind of routine on the 17th of August, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
They'll begin their, they'll begin their online remote. Dr. Lee and the lead high school teachers have, and I'll make sure I share it on Tuesday night if you would like, but they have done a marvelous job of setting up model Google classrooms that have already paced out stuff. We have lots of examples of, of assignments, assessments that they can implement immediately. Part of that process was when we first looked at what to do with Plan B or Plan C or some hybrid was prepared for a sudden switch. So they have worked very hard to have something that can be ready to go. And our mission is still was move toward this being something that is more comfortable and more used than what we were ever before. Again, the March thing was a very reactive situation. So I think one of the things that we've done a good job of, and I give credit for Dr. Lee and her coaches and her lead teachers, was setting up a Google classroom process that whether we start, finish, switch, we have a platform that our teachers can use to deliver information and content for students to respond. So Plan C, Cohort B and Cohort C students are, will be ready to go with those Google classrooms on the 17th.
Thank you, sir.
No, those are great questions. Oh, sorry, I forgot I'm supposed to do it. All right, I'm not going to touch it. The other thing that we have been working hard on, of course, is the question of providing daycare coverage to our staff who have children who are normally in school the same days and the same times as their parents. We are aware that that is one of, if not maybe the number one morale concern. And so we have been working hard to figure this out. In our very first survey that we released, one of the questions was if we were to end up in a situation where we were not having all students in five days a week, for you as a parent, is that going to be a concern? We took that information and all of those respondents and then sent a, another survey targeted specifically to those individuals that asked more detailed information. What school do you work at? What school or schools do your children attend? What grades are they in? We then began using that to look at what kind of options are available to us? How will we staff it? Where would it be? And what would be the pros and cons of any number of models? We ended up settling on two possibilities. One was using our PACES staff to provide daycare coverage during the day. We would have to set up certain sites. We don't have enough staff, and, and the children are not evenly spread out over our 18 schools, such to guarantee that we could warrant a site at every school. We have some that have as many as 39 staff, children who attend that school. We have some with little zero, some with five, some with seven. So it kind of runs the entire gamut. So one option was to try to create some kind of class structure, daycare structure, using our PACES staff that would be available, cover the entire day. One advantage was that would be no, limited to no impact on our other classroom teachers. But because PACES is a enterprise fund, it funds itself, it has no set aside funds, we would have to charge a fee like we do for our regular PACES after-school program. That staff do pay, they pay a reduced rate, but even staff have to pay for the after-school coverage. The other concern with option one is that if we're using our PACES staff during the day, that would limit their ability to do any after-school programming. Many of them took the position with the understanding it was part-time. And then secondly, even for those that would wish to full-time, that would dramatically change our costs because they are not receiving full-time benefits that go along with that. Uh, and then the third concern was that we had looked at PACES staff possibly being a support to our substitute issue. Many of them have said that if they were not full-time, they might be able to sub. Maybe not full-time, sub every day, but they could be someone that we might pull on.
Hello?
It's probably, Shirley, is that you? Hello?
Hello?
I think it was Richard. Kind of like your music.
Are you trying to reach Richard Schwartz?
Yes, I believe Mr. Schwartz got disconnected.
Oh, okay. Hold on one second. Let me see if I can get you to him. Hold on one second, Richard.
This is Richard Schwartz.
497. 3535.
Welcome to Google Meet. Enter the meeting pin followed by the pound key.
314.
Thank you. You are joining a call with more than four people. Please mute your phone.
All right, is everybody on the phone? Hear us again?
I'm on the phone.
Okay. You hear us okay now?
I hear you.
Cindy, are you here? All right, Richard, are you here?
I just got back, yeah.
She says she can hear us.
That's Rich right there.
Cindy says she can hear us. All right. Cindy's, okay.
All right, good to...
Go for it.
So, and we've talked to a couple of staff members who suggested an alternative, which we have been working with our schools on. One thing I failed to say is that, kind of as we've been talked about, that there is no solution that we have found that is perfect and unburdened some to any and perfect to implement. These are the, the two that have the least burdens and the most possible benefits. Having said that, the second option is the one that actually that we're recommending, having talked to staff and listened to some of the teachers. Under the proviso and the expectation that school staff are essential workers, we would propose that to allow the children of Pender County schools to attend the days that that school would run. So for example, if you're a K-8 student, we are running an AABB model with Wednesdays off. A K-8 student would be able to attend those four days. If you're a high school student and we're running all five days, you would attend all five days. What it allows for is that we can serve all Pender County staff without having to charge a fee. It does require that we're going to need to do some collaboration and, and work with our classroom teachers to help them with students that may have been there for the first lesson. Those students, we could work, work on their remote learning because they will still have those assignments. Some students may benefit from the opportunity to participate in a lesson again. We can work with our AIG teachers to provide enrichment. So that, that is one, that is the burden. It eases the burden of financial dues and penalties to our staff, but it does add a, a burden to their colleagues. Some of the advantage, though, is that it would allow our PACES staff to run an after-school program. We have received quite a number of calls, comments, and requests from our community and some of our principals about the importance of running our after-school program. It would allow us to do that. Ms. Lofton has also talked to her PACES staff, and a number of them have said that if we were to go this route, they would be available, again, to do some work with substituting, which we know is going to be a significant need. We've already begun the process of cross-referencing PACES staff with those who have or have not been trained as substitutes and begin trying to arrange for them to be trained as substitutes prior to the start of school. So in looking at the two, we worked the last 48 hours with our principals to see, would you have cohort space if you could make it work balanced against the numbers that appear to be going to 100% online and also physical space? So there are still a few things that we are working out, especially in terms of the exact numbers of in-person teachers. But right now, our recommendation would be to be able to communicate with the staff and let them know that we would be looking at an option two for our staff that do have students and that would normally be in school with them. Any questions? I know that's a lot, and I apologize for that much on the screen at one time.
So is this something you bring to us Tuesday night? Is that the plan? Because we can't make any decisions tonight.
Yeah, technically, that would be, I wanted to make sure I presented it today if at all possible. And then I would like to, we would like to work with our 21st Century Partners. They have offered and are willing to continue to create kind of learning labs in the schools that they already serve, which are primarily those schools that are on the western side of the district, where we also know that we will have the most gaps in terms of internet access. They are willing partners to help us with that. And I will say Parks and Rec has been trying to offer and be available to us. They've been great thought partners as we look at also trying to reach out to churches, libraries, other businesses. So I would like to be able to move next Tuesday to let, let our partners know kind of what we're thinking. And then just...
I'm sorry. How, how many, how many students are we talking about that belong to staff?
We had 133 individuals that responded. I can get you the exact number. It was obviously higher than that. We have quite a few that have multiple students. So when I leave, I can go back and get you that information. Minimally 133. But definitely higher than that. And then just last thing, just kind of update. I know one of the other questions that we've had a lot about is kind of working with our exceptional children's program. So as we continue to kind of look at planning under Plan B, one of the things our EC department has been doing is going back to what I talked about last time, the number of minutes. IUPs are based on the number of minutes. As we look at the number of students that are going to online, we look at what master schedules may look like during the day. Our plan is still to look at the IUPs. If a student can be served with number of minutes under an AA cohort or a BB or working under C, then we will go with that. If the IUP minutes cannot be met, even with kind of the freed-up time that we have under the Plan B master schedule, then we will need to have meetings to look at adding days. We do know that students that are in our adaptive program, the number of minutes that they need in order for their IUPs to be met is going to require multiple days. So we have already started working with those parents to try to make sure that they understand and have available to them additional days of the week, whether it's K all the way to 12th grade. Like our core program, the six-foot rule has been a real limitation for us. When it was 50%, that made it a little bit easier. Some of the classrooms that we use, just like our regular classrooms, the six-foot rule and the double assigning of days will make it physically impossible for us to have all the students. So we're looking at ways to tweak the schedules, ways to tweak the way the services are delivered. Previously, a student might have had minutes served just by the classroom teacher. We may have to work with the IUP team and be more targeted about pull-out programs or conversely... Uh, we may have to work with the I U P team and be more targeted about pull-out programs or conversely, going into the classroom more often. Um, that process is well underway. Uh, and Ms. Martina and her staff are beginning the process of scheduling meetings. For a long time, uh, D P I did not allow us to have meetings. Um, we have now been able to start scheduling meetings, uh, and that process also is underway. Uh, the last challenge, or one of the last challenges we face is evaluations. Again, you've got to be able to be in a building and be close to a student in order to have a true evaluation for an I U P. Um, that process is still being looked at with, with D P I and trying to get guidance on that, but we know we, we need to get started and we're trying on that one as well. Uh, that's a lot.
Yeah, I, well, and I just wanted to say thank you for addressing that because, um, I've been getting a lot of phone calls from E C parents lately who are getting very nervous because we're getting here in the eleventh hour-
Yes, ma'am.
-and they haven't heard anything. And, um, I hope that they can take a little bit of comfort in this and I'm assuming we'll probably talk about this more at the Tuesday meeting?
Yes, ma'am, probably. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Um, and I think their concerns are similar to the concerns that, that all of our parents and our teachers have at this point. Um, as we get closer and closer to August seventeenth.
Okay, and do we know anything about E C pre-K as of yet?
Yeah, we will, we are gonna have E C pre-K. Uh, they will follow the same district model as a starting place, just kind of the same way we're approaching core instruction. Um, our E C program, and to actually thank you for reminding me, our pre-K program, um, I think I've been saying, has been delayed in getting any guidance whatsoever. Uh, Ms. Pullen finally began to get some and actually she is on a statewide call right now. Uh, the good news is that, I think last time I shared with the board, that they were indicating they would not actually give any funding for a student who did not physically come to a site at least fifty percent of the time. That did not happen, as a matter of fact. Um, they have given us much greater latitude in serving our pre-K children, either virtually or in person, actually much more similar to what we've been talking about with Plan B. Um, Ms. Pullen's actually doing the exact same kind of survey. She's reaching out to her families and asking, what, are they planning on coming in person or would they prefer online? And we're developing options for what pre-K learning online would look like for those families and parents. Our E C program, E C pre-K program, like I always will follow the school model. Uh, they will go the A A and B B route when the buildings are open for instruction. Um, and then similarly with what we described for, um, any of our E C students, we will have to look at the I U P to determine the number of minutes needed, the number of days they would need to attend, and we'll kind of go from there the way we would with any of our E C students. But we will be moving forward with our E C program as we, as close to what we've had, as we've had in the past.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ray.
No, absolutely, thank you.
Is there any more last questions on the, on the instruction? How does this affect our, uh, agreement with Cape Fear for offering like the H V A C course and those courses this, um, year? Is that gonna be?
Uh, I don't, I'd have to give you some research on the, on a course by course. Uh, Cape Fear Community had to do a re-evaluation of all of its offerings, uh, to determine, they made decisions on which ones were online, which ones were blended, uh, which ones will have some or be only face-to-face. I don't, um, I don't know which of those rolled out. That information actually wasn't shared until the end of last week. Uh, Pender Early did start today. Uh, they had their B students in, uh, following the Cape Fear Community College schedule. Uh, talked to Ms. Brown. She had a successful first day. Uh, we do know that we have some students that, um, got bumped from what they thought were gonna be their Cape Fear classes as the model changed. Uh, and we're working with the college liaison right now to get those students enrolled. Uh, I don't know for sure, sir, which specifically how that impacted some of the specific ones that do require that lab time in person. I know the community college was going back and having to take a look at that, and that includes our Mechatronics program that we had worked so hard to develop with them as well. That's one of the ones that requires at least some in-person practice time. Uh, but I can try to get you a, a more detailed layout of which courses ended up under which format. Uh, I think the last little update, I just want to kind of quickly share, um, athletics. So, uh, overall, I think we've had a very successful rollout to kind of the workout process, um, so far. Uh, we were planning on moving forwards with the, the Phase Two, uh, which is sort of displayed up front. Um, Mr. Taylor did get information today that we now know for certain that, um, sports, official sports seasons will not start on September first. Earlier, they had said, um, would not start any earlier than, and they have now just changed that tendency to say they will not start on September first. We do not have a start date yet, um, in mind. Uh, we know they were sending a survey out to superintendents across the state to try to get a sense of the opening plans. Uh, and then, of course, as you, uh, Board knows, quite a number of districts have moved to Plan C. So, uh, I think that is causing some challenges for trying to figure out how to run, uh, statewide sports seasons. Uh, but right now, our plan is to continue moving forward with Phase Two, which has been a very successful program. It has allowed our students to get in, see each other, uh, see some staff members, and hopefully stay active a little bit. So, we'd like to keep that going. I think that's... Uh, and, Mr. George, I'll work on getting you the, um, breakdown by school for the Board as well. Um, and I'll also work on getting the Cape Fear stuff for you.
I'd like to add something about athletics. My, Board, my understanding is that, uh, the five-week delay that was announced by the High School Athletic Association today runs until September eleventh. Uh, they hope to have, uh, another announcement on August seventeen. Uh, the main word in that statement is "hope". They hope to have that. Um, I would not, um, but those are the two dates that were put out today as part of their response, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir, for all your hard work.
So, specific to Chromebooks, there are three vectors that we currently have set up for distribution at the school level. And, of course, we know that we'll have a, uh, significant number of children that will need to use them. Chromebooks that we are putting out, they must be used for state assessments because they are the ones that have the N C test app, application on them. So, we've got to make sure that they get the Chromebooks into their hands. So, currently at the high schools, currently at the high schools, um, they are all doing the same thing. So, they are setting up stations in large space areas such as cafeteria, gym, with a station that is specific for Chromebook distribution prior to the start of school. So, that's a no-brainer. I mean, that's great. They come in, sign off on their paperwork, get their Chromebook. That works just fine. There are a number of, um, drive-through pickup events. I mean, I, I hesitate to say like open houses because they're really not quite like the traditional houses, open houses that we've known. But the drive-through events, we will, uh, we'll be able to distribute Chromebooks also at the start of school, prior to the start of school. And then, of course, for those that do not pick them up, but they show up in person that first day, we will be able to do a classroom-by-classroom distribution when the students are face-to-face. That's the three basic vectors and that's what we're getting from all of the schools. Chuck and Craig had an opportunity to speak directly with the media coordinators and they are coordinating it at their schools. They have to be the vector. So, those are the three processes.
All right. Any questions?
On the next slide, we'll talk about transportation and, uh, Mr. Lefan, Mr. Smith should be entering at any second.
I'm online now.
All right.
Good afternoon, Board members. Quick update on where we're at is with transportation. Um, as you know, we have the three cohorts and currently Cohort A, the information will be out to the schools by August tenth. Cohort B will be out to the schools by August twelfth. We're aiming to have Cohort C to schools by August nineteenth. We can't guarantee that date right now, but we'll definitely know by August fourteenth. We're trying to get it out to the high schools soon enough so the Cohor- so, C group students can come in at least one day the first week of school. So, that's our goal. But I cannot guarantee that nineteen today, but we'll know by the fourteenth. Um, we are pulling for, we have so many data sets because they were having due to routing in because we have the cohorts. Because of that, bus stop lookups not gonna be available. I'm trying to work with Edulog to see if there's a way we can work around that, kind of like we will with the "here comes the bus" that would, you know, but right now, I'm not getting good feedback on that. So, that's where we're at, the bus stop lookup. The E C cohorts, we're, we're in the very early stages of routing for E C. Um, we're still getting some cohorts in. So, that being said, the routes, it's gonna take us at least a minimum of two weeks to route and a projected deadline to have those done is August twenty-fourth for the E C routes. So, um, the other transportation updates, next slide, please, Dr. B. Um, we've sent out a survey to our drivers to see who would be returning. Uh, we've got good responses back. Currently, we're s- six down, which is pretty good for the start of the year. We're working on filling those slots. There's still some that we're waiting to hear from here, but that's currently where we're at today. We ca- we're gonna do our online driver training. We're gonna provide it virtually this year or we're gonna provide resources through safe schools and, um, and they will still receive their four hours of training. It'll just be remote. It'll be provided online. And, um, bus preparation and delivery to schools, all buses should be ready to be delivered by schools by August fourteenth for the August fif- seventeenth start. When I say that, they'll be at the schools for the drivers to use the day of, first day of school. And that's all the updates I have right now.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I, yeah. I just wanna, I did, uh, what a bus route looks like for Cohort A. Is it, do, did they, the schools separate the students-
Yes, sir.
-by like the route?
No, um, what, what we did, the process was, we went ahead and routed for a traditional year by June, June thirtieth. So, our routes were completed for like school starting by June thirtieth. So, if we did go to a Plan B, we printed off the passenger list for all the bus routes and we sent those to the schools. The schools were able to look at like siblings' addresses together on that route and develop the cohorts to kind of help, help us with the load. You know, the number of students that would be on each bus, if you follow, because we can't have it twenty-four, one to the seat and siblings can sit together. So, we tried to, that gave schools the idea that if Brad and Beth or brother and sister, they're at the same address, so they can sit together, which allows us to utilize the bus more efficiently, just if you follow what I'm saying. So, schools did develop cohorts for the gen- the, the general ed students. The E C, we were still waiting on some guidance from E C on some things and now those cohorts are being, you know, determined and sent to us. So, it take, it, to route Cohort A took almost a week. The governor didn't make a decision till July fifteenth. We got the information out to the schools the next day. Gave them a dead, you know, Ju- July twenty-second deadline. They had to develop cohorts and that's not an easy task, you know, looking at their schedules and everything. We got all that back by July twenty-fourth. So, we really started routing for the, the Plan B a week ago, you know, July twenty-seventh. So, it's, it, and there was eight individual data sets that had to be built, which meant eight different route scenarios because of the way the cohort schedules work. So, I-
So, one bus will make how many routes, uh, in the morning and afternoon?
Well, there'll still be, there'll still be two runs. There may be some schools that have to do doubles because of the loads. You know, we may have, um, like we're, so that being said, there'll still be two runs in the morning. It, it'll still be a K eight run and then a high school run.
Right.
That's what the dividing up the cohorts was for. So, there's not gonna be, unless they have to double, there may be three runs on some bus routes.
So, like one bus won't have to go out multiple times to pick up K eight or K-
No, not, not at every school. We may have some, which we double, we've already do a little bit of double routing at Tops Elementary anyway. But, right now, the only school I see, foresee that is Cape Fear. May have to go out to a, a close subdivision and pick up some kids or, but right now, um, our numbers, the cohorts were divided pretty evenly that I think, not guarantee you, but I think we'll be okay as far as capacity where we won't have to do so much double routing.
So-
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. Well, um, I was gonna ask about "here comes the bus". At any point when, when everything kind of shakes out at the end, do we foresee being able to use "here comes the bus"?
Here comes, um, here co- last, "here comes the bus" is usually not rolled out in school districts until everything, all the kinks are worked out at the beginning of the year. You never have it open the first couple of weeks of school because there's just so much changing going on. So, we have talked with "here comes the bus". It is a possibility. So, we're gonna, if everything goes well, we hope to ha- try to roll it out October first, like we did last year. Which that's when it's u- usually most school districts, that's when you've done your reports for your load counts to the state. So, October first deadline is when most of the time "here comes the bus" is, is out for the public use.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you, Brandon, and your staff.
Yes.
Just to clarify, um, the nineteenth is an iffy date. Uh, that is getting really close to starting the, the C cohort, you know, it's gonna give them literally just hours, you know, a couple, forty-eight hours or less, twenty-four hours. But that's something we're trying to work with. That's gonna be a tight deadline. The E C deadline is a worry. Because if you notice, that was the twenty-fourth and we don't have a fix for that yet. And so, that's something we're, we're critically looking at at this point. Because, you know, school starts before the twenty-fourth. So, that's just, I just wanna make sure that was noticed and, and we realize that's a difficulty that we're still trying to figure out a fix. Just, ma'am.
Mr. Smith, I don't know if you heard me or not, but thank you and your staff for all the work that y'all put in this. I know it's gotta be a extremely challenging time.
I appreciate that.
Good afternoon, Board members. Um, I apologize for, uh, Mr. Griffith not being here to do the presentation that he has, uh, he just is otherwise detained and cannot be here. Uh, otherwise, uh, as our custodial provider, he would be giving, he would be giving you this presentation, but, uh, I would do my best stepping in for him. Um, currently, um, they are well aware of Health Department, CDC guidelines. Um, they are working through those and making sure that their staff is trained and they are up to speed on everything that has to be done. Um, so, uh, I'm, I'm confident that the training is gonna be there and that they're, that they're gonna be ready to go. Uh, currently, they're at seventy-five percent staffing. Um, they have had some folks that, um, have not come back. They are working on getting, you know, getting some people hired, going through their H R process. And they feel like they'll be about eighty-five percent staffed or maybe a little better by the time school starts in two weeks or ten days. Uh, but currently, they're, they are at, uh, you know, they are at, running at a, a staffing deficit. Supply-wise, we're in great, they're in great shape. Uh, they, they've done a great job keeping their supplies up and ordering for the school year. They're, they're in absolutely good shape to get started. Uh, and they feel like that they'll be, uh, have a three-month, uh, supply going into the school year once school starts. The supplies are coming in all the time. They're not currently having any issues with getting what they need. You know, the, the disinfectant, they're not having any trouble getting the disinfectant that they use. Uh, they're not having any trouble getting gloves, sanitizer, you know, they're ha- they're having no problems getting what they have to have. Uh, oddly enough, it seemed like, um, uh, bottles would be, would, would be something easy to get. Turned out bottles were one of the hardest things to get. Uh, and, but, but they have found a supplier for bottles and they feel like they're gonna be okay with bottles, both for the disinfectant and for hand sanitizer and those things. So, 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 again, we're, I'm pretty confident with them. Um, the only thing that really with the, with the, uh, disinfecting plan that I, that I am concerned about is the staffing issue. Uh, even at eighty-five percent, that means that we're gonna be looking at, uh, some extra overtime for those folks. Um, Mr. Griffith, please- Mr. Griffith believes that he has a good group that will take that on, upon themselves and works some overtime. But it does mean that we're, you know, you know, we've got to pay those folks. But other than that, that's the only, that's the only problem that I foresee with disinfecting the schools.
All right.
Would you talk a little bit about, I mean, you got the electrostatic fogging and just explain what that is and when it comes into play?
For the school, the school system, we bought two electrostatic foggers. Right now, with the chemical that they use, it'd be about $12,000 to do, to, to disinfect, every time we would disinfect them, all the schools. Guidelines say that, you know, that you should fog the school if you have a positive test. So the current guideline, currently what we're planning on doing is if we have, if we have to quarantine a room, classroom, school, building, then that building will be, we'll bring electrostatic foggers in and fog the entire building. But currently, it's, it's not a plan that we have to do all, all of the buildings once a week or anything like that. It will be after, after we have a positive test. Any questions?
Do we have a good idea of how much, that's for just the electrostatic?
Yes.
Fogger, right? Do we have an idea of how much it would actually cost, besides the cost of the fogger, to go in and fog a whole school?
I do, I can't give you a number on an individual school. They vary so much in size.
Gotcha.
That, that, that hasn't been, it wasn't broken down to me that way. But to do 2 million square feet, the estimate is about, is 10 to $12,000 that, you know, each time that we would do the whole system.
Okay.
We could probably knock that down a little bit because in, in that, you know, you're not going to do, you know, the, the big areas of, of the gym. You know, you're gonna do the bleachers and the, and the stands and, and, you know, you know, the walls and those things, but the actual, all that square footage you're not going to do. So I, I, I think it would be closer to the $10,000 mark.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Laura, as we're approaching, we'll talk a little bit about the building preparations, things that we've done, requirements.
Good afternoon, everybody. Some of the items that we're working on now is replacing the floor decals throughout the schools and all the hallways, six foot intervals. The schools that have decals in place are ready, it's Burgoye Elementary, Burgoye Middle, Topsail Elementary and Mappus Corner. I have tapes down on the floors of West Pender, North Topsail, South Topsail, Surf City Elementary, Pender Lee, Cape Fear Elementary, Cape Fear Middle, South Topsail and Topsail Middle School. For when the decals come in, they're all ready to go, everything's already marked out, we just put them down. We've also fabricated and installed custom sneeze guards at the school reception areas. All the schools are finished with that. We've purchased touchless hand sanitizer stations. We have wall mount units that we're gonna place outside of all the gang bathrooms in the schools. And we have freestanding units that we'll be placing inside of the, the entry points. The wall mounted units came in today, so we're gonna start installing those right away. We're waiting on the standing units, which will ship on the 10th and should arrive within five days. We've also ordered urinal screens and splash guards for all the sinks. We're waiting on the manufacturer to tell us when that comes in, then we're gonna set up the contractors to start installing all that. The other, we are also quoting desktop and tabletop barriers. We have pricing in there, we just wanted, we're just waiting for approvals on all that. And that's basically everything we're doing as of right now outside of schools.
So those classrooms, they lay out so when the GCA goes in and cleans, you'll know right back where to put it.
Yeah. Yeah, we, we send out different diagrams, how to set up the classrooms. So once they're set up, they, they shouldn't have to move.
Well, thank you and your team.
Thank you.
Mr. Rogers, for all the hard work y'all put in trying to get us ready to, there's a lot of extra going on now that we really don't have the resources for, but y'all are making it happen somehow, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mr. Lord, we have Aramark, Tanner being, talk about student feed.
Good afternoon. Can everybody hear me?
Yep.
All right, so when school starts, we're gonna start feeding all the K through 8 in the classroom. That service model will look pretty simple. We're gonna take the meals down to the classroom for breakfast on the first day of school. If we have 12 kids in the classroom, we're gonna drop 12 meals. The second day, it lends us a little bit of more leeway. We have a Google Doc that we're gonna be using that during the first day of school when they choose their lunch meals, they'll also say, ask them if they want breakfast for the next day. So that'll allow us to control the waste that we have throughout the school as well as making sure that every kid that wants a meal gets a meal. The Google Doc will be used for K-8 for lunch. It'll give them an option A or option B. Those will come with normal size. This will be what we call a straight serve program, meaning that they have to get all the components that are required throughout, for the USDA program. So they'll get a meat, meat alternate, grain, vegetable, fruit and milk. That'll, that'll come down to them. Once it comes down, we'll give the teacher a sheet showing what kids have chosen their meal. They will, they will give the meals to the student, sign the sheet and give the sheet back to us prior to the end of the day. Then we'll ring it in that way. That sheet will serve as a point of sale, just like a cash register, but everything will be cashless. We're working on a plan right now to, on Tuesdays, any student that wants meals to go home with them for the next three days. We're gonna allow, we're gonna try to figure out how to do that. The biggest thing we have right now is timing where we're gonna take it, when we're gonna take it to the student for the day. Because we don't want to interrupt any instructional time at all, as well as making sure that the, the meals will be okay by the time they get to the house. We do have, you know, some problems like when we go to Maple Hill, they're on the bus for a while. And granted, they're not as many now, not sure they're not as many stops, but you still have that time temperature problem. For high schools, breakfast will be served at points of entry. Meaning that we will take the breakfasts, breakfast down to a door where the kids come in. As they're being scanned, they'll go through the door, they'll get a meal or not get a meal. They can choose the components that they want, have a bag and they take that back to, to their classroom. For lunch, currently, all principals are in, on the same page for service, which means that they will release one class every five minutes until we get them all served. They will come down to the cafeteria socially distanced and they will be able to choose from a limited menu. Basically, don't, really the only thing we're taking away from them right now is the deli bar. Because the deli bar will take up time from them getting into the classroom. We want to make sure this is a, a quick process so they can get back to the classroom for instructional time. As we see that we can feed the students faster and still keep them socially distanced, we'll address that with the principals and allow them to release a little faster so they can get back to what they need to get done. Does anybody have any questions?
Sir, you said, I do really have a question.
You said each student, as they come in, will get a, be able to grab a breakfast, is that even if, I mean?
Although, we're gonna be back on the National School Lunch Program, so all of it will be based on their status. So if they're free, reduced, paid, they'll be charged accordingly.
Okay. So are they gonna be taking lunch IDs at that spot? I mean, how, how are we gonna track who?
We currently are asking for some, as far as the high school is concerned, some iPads. So we, we can use that as a point of service. Kid gives us, the student will give us their number and then we'll, it just uploads to the system.
But you said we're gonna be cashless, so we're got, we've got to depend on parents funding their account, is that?
Well, what I mean cashless is we're, we're, so for example, for K-8, when we go around delivering the meals, they can give us, the teachers can give us an envelope with their money in it and we'll put it on their account. Because we know that not everybody has access to.
Right.
A computer and things like that. So when I say cashless, meaning that when you go up to a cash register at a convenience store, you pay with cash or a card. In this case, we're dropping off the food. Anybody that's on that sheet when we get it, when we have it returned, the teacher will sign it saying all these have got the meals, we'll enter that into the system. So that part is the cashless part. We will still accept cash, but we're not gonna do it at, as we drop the meals off.
Okay.
Okay? Just, just a quick note about sanitation. In food service industry, as always, we have, we have a higher level of sanitation throughout the process because we have to make sure our food is safe to go out to the, the public. So we're gonna continue our regular service and we're gonna step it up just a little, you know, a little extra with some sanitation in some areas that normally wouldn't get sanitation on pre-COVID days, like the door handles and all those areas that are, are high touch. Right? All of our employees will be required to wear masks and we'll be checking their temperatures as they come into the building.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
I got one last thing, and this is probably for Dr. Hill and his staff more so. You know, we gave away lunches to anybody that wanted one back in the spring.
Right.
And we gotta let people know that's going, going away. That we're back to the either free, reduced or paid lunch. So I'm afraid that we, if we don't get that word out, somehow we're gonna have kids showing up, you know, assuming that they're gonna get the free lunch like they did in the spring with the Meals on Wheels program and that's no longer gonna be available.
Yeah, from my understanding, we're gonna put that on Facebook as well as doing all fall.
Thank you, sir.
So we're gonna move a little bit more towards the definite health requirements now by the state. And again, I'm gonna butcher your name one more time. Mr. Diego Armarochera.
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 There we go.
Sorry. Our expert locally, we're gonna start this off because there's been a lot of conversations about face coverings. And everything we've got here is copied and pasted directly out of the state document. Talking to this, I'm sorry about picking up.
All right, so we're, yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna sit down. This is gonna be a long section, so I, it's okay with the board, I'm gonna let him use my microphone to talk through these questions because this is really where we're talking about the, the health requirements and this is, you know, led in collaboration, but the Department of Health and Human Services is really the point of contact. But we've copied and pasted a lot of things here, where our face requirement, where a face covering is required. And basically, the, the definition there is they're required at all times at school. If you're inside, outside, at any point. And what about medical exemptions? At this point, if you have a medical exemption, and I'll ask Mr. McPherson, you know, he sent, he sent some latest information today that we weren't able to get in here, but he may have some updates. But as of now, you can state you have a medical exemption and we will actually work with you on that. We're working to offer you an alternative, a step down plan, which is basically would be if you can't wear something on your face, there to be some kind of neck shield that comes up, which we've been in collaboration with the Department of Health and Human Services about that as an option. To kind of give something as a step down other than just straight up, just straight working with distance education as an option. What about non-cloth? That was really put in there. We've actually talked about that a little bit, but that's a definition of, you know, cloth face masks are okay. The ones you see that the nurses are using are still okay as well. The one like Kim has right here, Ms. Collins. Those are, those are fine as well. There's been a couple of questions about whether those disposable ones we're using, those are fine. We have, I've got those approved. Well, just click it for me. Is that the next one? Okay. So this is the North Carolina DHHS Guidance for Childcare. This is a clarification about younger children, I think it was brought up earlier. Children, it says, based on the interim, interim NC DHHS Guidance for Childcare, which was June 26th, face mask should not be placed on children under the age of two. So that was an answer, I think some people had, how young do face masks go? So that, that was the guidance that we actually received on that. And that's from legal counsel. I'm not clicking again, there you go. And then this statement we put in there to, to make sure, this is actually from, this is the Assistant General Counsel, the Office of General Counsel, North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. It says, basically, it would be up to the school system to either make accommodations for the child or inform the family that the school system is forcing the child to do remote learning. We did not want to go straight from wear the mask or remote learning. That's why we're trying to offer a shield and work through that process with local Department of Health and Human Services. And so I think we're there in agreement on that, is that that would be an appropriate alternative to a mask if you had a problem with something rubbing your face. There you go, thank you. This is more, this just goes into shields. This just talks about basically the ability at the bottom, it says if a transparent mask is unavailable and needed or if a person cannot wear a face covering. It was, basically there was some back and forth discussion about this for a while and now we actually do have approval that face shields are allowable. At some point, they were, they were in conversation about whether that would be an appropriate option. So we have clear, we've cleared this hurdle.
Face shield is, is allowable without a mask under it.
Yes.
They can't wear a mask, right?
Correct.
What, what dictates if they can or can't wear a mask and just, there was one that claustrophobic, for example. Is that, that's a psychological disorder? Do they have to have a psychological evaluation proving they can't wear it or we just?
Steve, do you want me to respond to that?
Sure.
Well, who, who is it, who is the question directed to, I'm sorry?
Rich, I, I believe it's the, the lead nurse.
The lead nurse for the.
Okay, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt them.
Go ahead.
I, I think he's the first.
Okay. It's my understanding, and Diego, correct me if I'm wrong. If they voice that they cannot wear a face shield, if they say that they have a medical issue or a psychological issue, for example, we cannot question that, we have to try and make accommodations for them. And the accommodations that we have talked with the Health Department about are the shields. Is that right?
Correct, yes. So as she said, at this time, there's not a recommendation to ask for any sort of documentation about why they are unable to wear a face mask.
I've had teachers ask me when they're addressing the students, are they allowed to, to take their face shield down? As the governor does when he addresses the public at his press conferences.
That would not be recommended. I haven't seen anything to speak to. I haven't seen anything to speak to that.
There's, there's, executive order just said you could remove it for making speeches, and they're...
Not sure if that would fall under that. I'd have to read into that and see if that would be allowable for, during instruction.
Mr. George, I will speak to that from the best of my knowledge, reading all the guidance that's been put out by DPI, the State Board, and Health and Human Services relating to school districts. What, regarding face coverings, um, DHHS has been very careful to distinguish, um, things that appeared in executive orders by Governor Cooper that they are gonna say continue to apply. But for the most part, they've generally said, "You follow the requirements that we're giving you, the executive order applies in the general public sense." So the, the exception you speak to, that, you know, whenever you're giving a speech, you get to remove your mask, that is not something that's addressed specifically in any guidance I've read. And, um, to the best of my knowledge, there's not been an exception for teachers when they're speaking to students.
In fact, in fact, the guidance says that they're to be worn at all times unless there's a mask break.
Thank you.
So we have some hearing impaired students that rely on lip reading to accommodate them, and they are mainstream.
There are, yeah, there are, there, can I address this for a second? This is Richard Schwartz. Um, the, uh, there, there are exceptions for cloth face coverings that are allowed if the parent, not the child, states that, um, the child qualifies for one of four reasons. And the four reasons are for anyone who has trouble breathing or is unconscious, for anyone who's incapacitated or otherwise unable to remove the face covering without assistance, for any child under the age of two, and then the one that is gonna be most likely, um, to surface in the school setting, that is, anyone who cannot tolerate a cloth face covering due to developmental, medical, or behavioral health needs. And within that category are, um, that last category are folks who, um, might, uh, might be deaf or need to look at lip reading, um, or, uh, who can't tolerate the cloth face covering because of autism or some other development, developmental medical or behavioral health needs. There's nothing in the guidance that prevents us from asking the parent to certify that, or from getting confirmation from a healthcare provider, um, determining that, and, um, and then getting a determination from the healthcare provider whether or not the child is, um, prevented or not prevented from being able to wear a face shield. Uh, if they can't wear a mask, the next alternative is to go to a face shield. Um, and for certain developmental needs, or for, you know, for an ESL kid, for example, that, uh, that might rely on, on, uh, on looking at lips or something, uh, there may be a need for the teacher and/or the students to go to face shields.
To piggyback off of what Richard says, or just said, the, um, face shield option, in addition to face shields, there are the, the cloth face coverings for teachers that have the clear cutouts. So in the guidance, there is a preference for using a face shield with a cutout when available, and in the event it's not available, or, um, the teacher's, for some reason, finds that that's insufficient to address the needs of the student, then the adult goes to the face shield. Is...
Are we gonna provide our staff with, that need these devices? I know the state's providing the cloth face coverings. What is the plan?
We should be.
Yes, sir, especially with EC program, we've already looked into some shields, and that's what we're trying to get, get here and deliver it.
I'm not sure, is Dr. Heidner?
I'll, I'll see if those have been delivered and see if we can get you at least a picture of one.
The question of face shields, have we received a shift of the face shields, please, in program?
I don't believe they're actually on site yet. We have ordered them, per early recommendations, they're the shields that come from the bottom to the top.
Their collar and shield?
Could you forward a picture of those to the board? Yes. Thank you. And that, that's pretty much all the information at this point. Are there any more questions about mask-based cover or shield? Uh, we'll move into, uh, and what we did was basically take the most frequently asked questions, because this is all over the place. We, we've had hundreds and hundreds of emails trying to break them down into a series of frequently asked questions. And, uh, so that's what we'll do today, and these questions were actually, and I'll, I'll let you introduce it, but these are questions that were through a state conference that we had, teleconference. And, uh, we thought this was the best way to present it, to try to go through the frequently asked questions, and then see if the board had any further questions after that.
Dr. Hill, we might, uh, if there's a way, we, is there a way that we could put this PowerPoint on like Facebook or somewhere, because I've, it's got a lot of answers that may help the public?
Yes, sir.
With some of the, after we're done, I guess, would be better in case you need to add anything to it, or any of that.
Alright, so, thank you.
Can we go back one slide? I got one question about one slide, I thought, there it is. There's a lot of discussion about gym class. What's, what's gym class? Can somebody explain what gym class is gonna look like, what our, our limits are on offering exercising? Because we can remove our mask then. What it, I should have...
Kevin Taylor, Director of Strategic Services. So the guidance we've gotten from, um, the Athletic Association is requiring us to take mask off during vigorous activity, and that's highlighted also in NCDHHS and supported by Pender County Health Department as well. Uh, look, it'll look similar to that. The other recommendation is to do as much as we can outside. Uh, so whenever they're vigorously exercising, they should remove their mask. Uh, the teacher should still remain with a mask, of course, but during exercise, they should remove those.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. It says here, "Do close contacts with a positive case need to quarantine for fourteen days as well?" The answer to that is yes, they must complete a fourteen-day quarantine. So fourteen, the way the quarantine works is the last day of exposure.
They have offered and are willing to continue to create a learning lab, and things that they already serve, which are primarily...
Somebody's on two conference calls.
I think it's in our spare room, we got people listening there.
So when you say close contact, at my employers, we have to be within six foot of someone for fifteen minutes or more?
Correct, that is the term.
Face-to-face, correct, close contact. Is that...
With or without a mask?
With or without a mask, correct. Is that why we're, is that our same definition?
That is the same definition the CDC has provided, correct. As it says, or as, as I was saying, the, the last date of exposure would be considered day zero, the next day is day one, all the way to day fourteen would be the length of their quarantine. It says, "A viral diagnostic test does not shorten this requirement if they're, the current recommendation is to test at least day six or later. If they do test negative at that point, they would still be required to continue and complete that fourteen-day quarantine."
Any questions about quarantine?
If, if the person tests positive, is it the five days after their last symptom? Is that still, or do they start their fourteen day at that?
So if a person under quarantine was to become positive, test positive, and were symptomatic, then they would switch over to isolation, and their isolation period would go from at least ten days from symptom onset. So at that tenth day, if they have not had a fever for at least twenty-four hours prior without using fever-reducing medications, and they have improvement of other symptoms, they would be cleared to be released from isolation at that point. Phrase two, if someone tests positive and is asymptomatic, then it's ten days from the first date of a positive test.
And there's no, there's no requirement anymore for a follow-up test, is that correct?
Correct.
So once you're, you're done with your ten days?
As long as you meet the criteria that have been set out, then yes, you can be released from isolation.
Right, if you're symptom-free.
Without, without a second test, correct.
Yeah, yeah.
Different ones, yeah.
Back to the one? There you go.
There you go.
So if there is a positive case, the Pender County Health Department will have to be notified. Um, it is possible that we may know about the positive test beforehand. We do have providers that fax the results to us, and they also feed it electronically into the surveillance system that we use to report these cases to the state. It's definitely possible that you guys could be made aware first if that provider, the provider does generally get that information before we do. And if they make the parent or teach, or, sorry, parent or student or staff member aware, then they could be the ones that lets you know before we do. So we do have good lines of communication between us and the Pender County school system.
Board, we'll take you through, uh, what we're setting up is an every morning meeting with DHHS and our lead medical staff. And, uh, what we're trying to do is create a dashboard situation where everybody at every school reports in every morning, within the first hour, we're trying to ascertain, you know, how many, how many possible exposures, how many possible positive tests, family-related symptoms, everything we've got, and we'll show you that in a few minutes. We'll show you, we actually have a small video showing how we're doing that. Basically, there'll be a review team every day to see what the situation is. To that effect, that'll also lead into our sub situation, which, you know, normally a sub is a sub, it may be for a day, almost all our case, or we're gonna have an increase of long-term subs, because every one of these will basically become a long-term sub situation.
So this slide basically walks through what the local health department does when we determine that we do have a positive case of COVID-19. First, we will confirm that it is a lab-confirmed case. We will determine to follow up with close contacts, as I said, within six feet for at least fifteen minutes. We will assess who's a close contact, then only dismiss those close contacts. We're hoping that with assigned seatings and cohorting, that we'll be able to determine that only a select number of students will be the ones that will have to be issued quarantine orders at that point. As it says there, if we cannot assess who's a close contact within the classroom, then consider dismissing it and quarantine the whole classroom. I'm sure everyone knows there could be circumstances with children with behavioral issues or anything like that, that could cause the need to quarantine an entire classroom. So if we cannot determine who's a close contact with the school, then consider dismissing the whole school. So if there is an identified cluster, then we will develop letters to assist with communications. We'll work in conjunction with Pender County schools to make that happen.
And that's two confirmed cases? Is that what's considered a cluster?
So that's an outbreak in a congregate living setting, such as a nursing home or a jail, would two cases is considered an outbreak. A cluster is at least five cases that we are able to link back to each other. So you could have five cases in a school that were all, that were not linked to each other, and that would not be considered a cluster. But say, for instance, you had a bus, and you had five children on that bus that all tested positive, that would be considered a cluster. Second slide there, if we have a cohort strategy in place, those individuals in the cohort, with someone who tested positive for COVID-19, can switch to virtual learning and stay home during the time of their quarantine, and the school may remain open. Both schools and local health departments need to take care to avoid disclosing personal, personally identifiable information, and should follow all applicable privacy requirements, including those of the Family Education Rights and Privacy Act. That is something that we definitely take very seriously, and we know that in some of these smaller schools, smaller communities, it can be a struggle sometimes to maintain that privacy.
This is Dr. B. right here. So this is basically our, uh, organization department is doing a great thing now called Tech Bytes. So instead of sending out a long, giant email, what we're trying now is, uh, as you see, our own Mr. Lawson at the bottom left-hand corner, is trying to walk people through what their screen actually looks like. So I'll let Dr. B. talk a little bit more about how we're actually collecting this information day-to-day at each school.
Thank you. Um, this is a thirteen-minute video. This, um, Kim Collins, in conjunction with Kevin Taylor and Craig Lawson, constructed a Google form that feeds into, um, a series of spreadsheets where we can report on a daily basis, symptoms, exposures, and then positive tests, which then feed into the dashboard. Um, this is, this, this video, this Tech Byte, was done for administrators to train them how to use the Google form. We can do this two different ways. It's a, it's a thirteen-minute video. It's very informative, it can show you exactly what we're doing in response to the previous information, if we see children that are coming to school that are displaying symptoms, or if they've been exposed, or if somebody tests positive. So if you're willing, kind of, sit through it? Okay, perfect.
Welcome to Tech Bytes, an unscripted short vlog on digital learning in five to ten minutes. I'm your host, Craig Lawson, Instructional Technology Specialist for Pender County Schools. So let's get started. Alright, today we are going to be looking at, um, our new COVID-19, uh, reporting form, and some of the things that we've set up for that. So I'm gonna switch over here to my desktop, and we'll start looking. I'm gonna actually start my clock on my phone, because I forgot to. My bad. Totally my bad. Alright. So here from ClassLink, um, if you are a school nurse, a administrator in your building, or someone designated at the central office, uh, within leadership, you're gonna see a couple of new apps here. Right on your main screen, not in any folders, you're gonna see the little thermometer here, it says COVID-19 reporting form, okay? When you click on this, this is gonna take you to the Google form that we've created. Now, uh, right now, again, this is only accessible by administration and school nurse, and that is how, um, the Instructional Service Department and Kevin Taylor want to start with this. There is the flexibility that we could release this to more people to complete later on, as the need arises. Alright, so here on this main form, the first thing you're gonna do is, uh, select the location. I'm gonna go ahead and select Burtall Middle School. You'll also notice there is a CO for central office and an RC for resource center. Then I'm gonna choose whether I'm reporting on a staff member or a student. So I'm gonna choose staff for right now. The forms are basically identical, um, you know, it doesn't really matter if you're selecting staff or student as far as the questions you're gonna get afterwards, uh, but it's important for us to distinguish between those two. Alright. All right, so we hit next. For students, instead of, I gotta go back, I just said all the, the questions are the same, and I'm like, the next, I hit the next button and I lied. So for students, this part is actually different. You will use a student ID number, right? So you'll see if I go back and I choose student and hit next, it asks for a student ID number, and it's gonna require you only to use a number. We felt more comfortable doing this, you know, when talking to Ms. Collins and Mr. Taylor. So, so again, if I go to staff, it is gonna ask me for first and last name. So I'm just gonna put something in here. Generic, there's nothing in here currently that has any actual real data in it on any real students or staff members. This is just right now a mock-up. All right, so I've got my staff members, first name staff members, last name, I'm gonna hit next, then I get three options, okay? And again, from this part now moving forward, everything's the same between the staff and the student. Sorry about that. So you're gonna get the option to choose whether you're reporting on symptoms, a possible exposure, or a diagnosis of COVID, okay? If I click on symptom and hit next, these questions are what's gonna appear. So I'm gonna have to pick the date, today, what symptoms were present or that were expressed to me by the individual that I'm reporting on, so maybe fever, shortness of breath, and then where were the symptoms first noticed? Upon arrival to campus, while at school, or at home? I think we're gonna be changing this at home to other, just because we got some feedback that, you know, maybe this happened while they were, you know, out at the grocery store or something like that. So you would do that. All right, so we'll say at school. If I go back and I choose exposure and hit next, now I can select the date that they were first exposed. This is important, right? Whereas the other one was the date of the actual symptoms when they first started occurring. Is the exposure due to contact with someone who is awaiting a test result, yes or no? And then is exposure due to contact with someone confirmed to have a positive test, yes or no? And then finally, you've got diagnosis, and when we hit next, this is going to ask me for the date of the positive diagnosis, so maybe it was yesterday on the 3rd? And then are they currently experiencing symptoms, yes or no? Okay? And then you would hit next, and then has the school nurse been notified? This question will occur regardless of whether you're reporting on the exposure, a symptom, or a actual diagnosis. Hopefully, the answer is yes, hopefully, we've informed the nurse. If not, and you're on no, we need to make sure we do go inform the nurse. So I'm gonna go ahead and hit yes, they have an option, you know, or I should say you have an option, to send a copy of responses, and then you're gonna hit submit. And suddenly, my screen went black. I don't know why I did that, but hopefully, everything's okay. I promise, the form was not designed to, to suddenly shut down your computer when you finish submitting. That was really weird. All right, so, so now the, the form has been submitted. All right, we're gonna go back to Class Link at this point, okay? So where does this go? Now, if the report is a diagnosis, like I just submitted, it actually will send an automated email to the principal, assistant principal, nurses, et cetera, okay? So they will get an email within the first minute or so of that report occurring, and that will notify them that a diagnosis has been made at an individual at a particular school. If it's just a symptom or, or an exposure being reported, it's not going to send an automated email out. However, every school has a spreadsheet that records all of this information. You know, and, and the way that you get that is, is through Google Drive. However, one of the things that I was asked to do by some principals was find a way to make it easier for them to know, hey, where do I get to this important thing in, in my drive? So what I'm gonna actually do is that under your school folder, you'll see here on Class Link, you'll notice I got all the schools, but for you all, you'll just have the school that you are assigned to on here. So when I click on the BMS folder here, I'll see that I actually have a Google Sheet icon, and it says BMS COVID-19 reporting sheet. Excuse me. So when I click on this, it's gonna actually open that spreadsheet up for me. And this way, I don't have to remember, you know, where is it shared with me at, you know, how do I get to this in my Google Drive? Okay? Again, that's only gonna be visible for those people that have access to this form, which is currently administration and the nurse at that building. Okay, on this spreadsheet, you're gonna notice that there are columns here in gray. Those columns are what's being fed into by the Google form. You will not be able to edit in those columns, and that's by design, okay? Because it would mess everything up. Then you have the columns here in white, and those are the columns and fields for your school nurse to come in and to fill out as they're going through and verifying this information that's being reported on the Google form, okay? And at the bottom here, you're gonna see you've got a student symptom tab, a student exposure tab, a student diagnosis tab, a staff symptom tab, a staff exposure tab, and a staff diagnosis tab. And you'll see here on these last two, we actually have some data in there. So this is exactly what it's going to look like when this starts to get filled out, okay? So here on the staff diagnosis, you'll see I've got the case number here at the beginning, the timestamp, which staff member reported this, the location, whether it was staff or student. Again, all of that information is gonna help separate it and filter it out to each of these tabs across all 18 schools, right? So every school will have a spreadsheet, and again, it'll have separate tabs for students compared to staff, to help kind of, kind of compartmentalize the data into hopefully useful chunks of information, and you can have it organized and know exactly where it's at. So you're gonna also get here the staff member's name. Again, if it was a student diagnosis, you would just have their ID number, and then you will see that it is a diagnosis in this case, okay? And what was the date of the positive test results, okay? So I need to go in and make sure in these spreadsheets that I'm setting it up to show the date and time, or actually just the date, not the time. So I'll go do that, but you'll see the actual date of the positive diagnosis. Whether or not they're currently experiencing symptoms, and then again, whether the nurse has been notified. Again, because these questions are different, you'll have a different number of columns on each of these tabs, but you'll see that the data will fill in exactly from the Google form. Then at this time, this is when the school nurse would be able to come in and they would be able to fill in this information, the date that they checked this, the time, the nurse's email, they can fill in there, whether or not the individual needed to be isolated, time isolated, time, a contact was called, name of the contact, time of release, who they released to, and then when the individual can return to school. There's an optional field here for a doctor's note on when they can return, if that's different than the return date specified here in column U. And then whether the PC HHS was notified, yes, no, or NA, and then a section for notes for anything that is not covered, okay? And again, nurses will get additional training on all of these columns from Ms. Collins, so they know exactly what to do under any given situation. Just a few more moments here, sorry, I ran a little long. So this is, again, basically where the data is feeding in, where you can see that. The last thing that I wanted to mention is here on Class Link, starting today, and again, we're going to expand upon this in upcoming weeks. In the dashboard folder, you will see there's a COVID-19 reporting dashboard. Again, this is only available to principals and leadership, and this dashboard is where we will be taking out all personal identifiable information and putting together kind of a district and a school view of what's occurring based upon the COVID-19 reporting sheet. Again, we've gotta get some more data in those reporting sheets before we can really start to flesh out this dashboard, but I wanted to show you where that was gonna be accessible from in Class Link, so that you could get to it next week when we start, you know, needing to really use this form. All right, well, I hope that that was helpful. Again, if there are any questions on the technology part of this, please feel free to reach out to me if there's any questions upon, you know, you watching this video as far as how this is gonna be done at the school, any of those types of procedural questions, that's gonna go to Mr. Taylor or Ms. Collins. I'm just kind of the geek here in the background, just working with the tech to set up the tools that they need. Also, if there's any questions about privacy, HIPAA, FERPA, those would also be directed to Ms. Collins and Mr. Taylor. All right, well, I look forward to sharing more information in the upcoming weeks with you all, and I hope this video was informational. If you have any additional questions, please reach out. Thank you.
So that's the reporting form and the process that went out by video to all the principals. So they have it, it's very simple, it's very straightforward. I cannot articulate well enough just how much work that Kim and Kevin and Craig have really put into this to make sure that it's not only user-friendly, but also reports all the data. This is an example of the spreadsheet, I just opened it up and just took a snapshot of it. It was in the video, but just so you can see how really well-articulated it is, and this is about half of it. It goes over, if you've got a 27-inch screen, it goes over two and a half screens. So there's lots of fields of data, because we're going to need all of that information to be able to make some of the decisions, as articulated by Diego earlier, when reported to the health department. What are we going to do if a child's symptomatic? If they're, if they've been exposed, and especially if it's a positive exposure, and then of course, what occurs after those processes? So just real quickly, this is test data. It's just test data. So Buzz Lightyear, Donald Duck, Goofy, Minnie Mouse are in here to test the data, but you can see that this is what it's going to look like. Now, of course, you know, hopefully, there won't be more cases, but if there are symptoms, exposures, and of course, identified cases, this data will be fleshed out. And so it will look, can be reported by school, it can be sliced and diced by students or by staff as necessary and appropriate, through dropdown menus.
And so basically, Dr. B is be operating on what we, we've created kind of a mini EOC in our strategic double-wide trailer behind the office. And so that's where everybody will actually come in virtually every day, and we'll actually meet there, and this is what we'll be looking at every day. This information to determine where are we at today, and how do we make the decision of what we do today? Because this is, this is an ever-evolving situation, it's not something you just set a plan and walk away, this is an everyday plan. What we're showing you is how we're starting, and that's, you know, that's a plan to start, and that's been the key word, and it's the whole time. So we'll be constantly monitoring to see what we're doing. And I think that'll lead into our next slide.
So the threshold for school closures, as it says at the top here, the level of interaction between students and staff, which kind of goes back to the whole discussion about cohorting, the level of risk, the number of cases, the extent of close con, the extent of close contacts will determine if individuals, classes, or schools need to be dismissed. So as I was saying, hopefully with the, when, as the local health department initiates the contact tracing, we'll be able to determine who the close contacts are to this positive case, and take the steps that are needed, whether it be dismissing individuals or classrooms or the entire school. So if needed, a school may implement a dismissal for two to five days. This is for Pender Health and Human, Health and Human Services to investigate and determine next steps. Once, when should the school disinfect if there's a positive case? CDC is currently recommending waiting 24 hours before disinfecting, whereas symptomatic COVID-19, or a person with COVID-19 has been in school. If that is not possible, then they do recommend waiting as long as possible.
So the actions will be taken off a positive test, not a symptom, someone showing symptoms, is that correct?
Correct, yes. Yeah, if, if an individual was to be symptomatic, then we would request that they get tested as soon as possible to determine whether or not they were actually positive for this, so then we could take those next steps. This is, this is where we're kind of like, what are your scenarios? Do you guys have those?
So the symptoms seem to change every day. What are the, what are the main symptoms that we're gonna determine if we ask someone to go get a test? Is there some symptoms rank higher than the other symptoms? I seen today, you know, there was muscle pain and all this other stuff, there's, symptoms range from your toenail hurting all the way up, it seems like every day there's something added to it. So what do we determine our symptoms that we're gonna request someone to go get tested?
Do you have a copy of the symptom screening checklist? Like the daily symptom screening?
Yes, yes, it's gonna have to be.
Was it in the packet you filled?
It should have been, yeah. It's fever of 99.9 or greater, chills, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, um, there's one more, Diego, what is it? Fever, chills, shortness of breath, cough. That's it, cough. So those are the symptoms that have been kind of dialed in from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and the CDC and the local health department recently. In the very beginning, we had a whole list of symptoms, which did include the muscle aches, body aches, sore throat, headache, all those symptoms, but now the symptoms that we have to isolate, if somebody complains of in school, are the fever of 99.9 or greater, chills, shortness of breath, difficulty breathing, and cough. Loss of taste or smell, that was it, thank you. I've said it so much, I can't remember what I've said and what I haven't.
Is there one of those symptoms, or a combination, is it just one symptom? Are these masks drawn up or without, I want to call them?
I agree. One of those symptoms will cause us to have to isolate a student or send the staff home.
That person says positive, that's why we wanna call the visiting, I'm sorry.
The world war. So, so, and that's, that's where we're, we got our health professionals, because every morning, we're gonna meet, but it's led by our health professionals. And so they're making these decisions for us and with us. And so what we, what we've been talking about is if you do what you're talking about, if you have a student or a staff member come with those symptoms, they have to leave and be tested. So if they come back positive, then what?
Well, then, at that point, we would work to determine who their close contacts were, and go through that whole investigation and make our recommendations about who should be quarantined, and you know, whether that's a bus, a classroom, individuals, and so on.
So we have nurses that share sites. What's our, are we, what's our plan with our nurses? I know we don't have a nurse on every single site, so the nurses are a big part of this tracking.
Right, the state has actually created a process for us to train what they're calling delegates, one to two people per school that will act in that role of the nurse. In other words, if they have, if the nurse is not there and someone complains of one of those symptoms, they're, they get put in isolation, they will have training, the nurse will give training to them, and we have specific guidelines that we will train them by. And they will go through, you know, depending on what it is, they will notify us, and that nurse will notify me, I'm gonna be the direct link to the health department, so it, it kind of goes in that order.
Okay, so say if we have a child that comes in with a 101-degree fever and is coughing and can't taste anything, we send them to isolation there at the school, and we call a parent, the parent or whoever has ability to come get them, or authorization to come get them. The parent comes, picks up the kid, takes them home, and what if the parent says, no, I'm not gonna go in and get them tested?
That's okay, I still have to stay home for four That's okay, they still have to stay home for 14 days.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, but say the parent wants to get them tested and doesn't know where to go. Where is the most easily accessible place for a parent to go get a COVID-19 test for their child?
If they live in the Burgar area, the simplest place is the health department. Once our schools open and our school-based health centers get open at Cape Fear and Pender High School, those, they will be doing testing as well. And we, the resources are on the other side, on the east side of the county, the nurses will be able to help them with, you know, resources in that area.
Okay, thank you.
One thing I'd like to say, if a child does become symptomatic and they have symptoms that are compatible with COVID-19, it would actually be a 10-day isolation period from when they started symptoms. So, if they have, like I said, a clinically compatible illness and they don't want to get that child tested, then it would be best practice to keep them out of school for at least that 10-day period until they've met that criteria to be released from isolation versus 14 days.
So, isolation versus quarantine.
Right, yeah, so quarantine is used for those who have been exposed to the virus, and that's because there's a two to 14-day window after you're exposed to when you can develop the sickness, the illness. And with isolation, we are keeping them away from others until they're no longer infectious. And that's why sometimes it's a, it's a little bit shorter for the isolation versus quarantine.
So, if we have, we have, if we have a positive case and they are in close contact with three or four people, we're not going to require those three or four people to go be tested, correct? We're going to just quarantine them?
It's my understanding that we cannot require someone to submit to a test. We will, can speak to that any further, but...
That's my understanding from the health department.
Okay.
So, at that point, if they're exposed, then yes, 14 days. And if they were to become symptomatic during those 14 days, then they should be out for at least that 10-day isolation period.
However, I will say one more thing, they have to be fever-free for 24 hours and, and their symptoms be improving before they can return.
Correct.
As you can see, that's why we need health professionals constantly understanding the situation and diagnosing the situation. So, this is not a one-size-fits-all here, the rules here are five bullet points, that's how it's going to happen. The situation here is going to require daily, daily reviews by health professionals at the health department and our medical staff. That kind of takes me into our next slide, which is basically, you know, we're, what we're monitoring is basically if, if we have to come back and maybe make some alternative recommendations to the board, be it a health classroom, be it a school, be it a school system. Some of the things we're looking at as we go are, are the reported cases outweighing the response resources. I think that's pretty straightforward, you know, if we can't staff the people who are supposed to be responding to the students, families, and staff. The other one we're worried a little bit about is the soup, is the constant worry we have in a normal year is substitutes. Substitute teachers are becoming a concern, and this would definitely increase, you know, with the 10-day mandates and the 14-day quarantines. What you're looking at is now long-term subs every time we, we actually ask for a sub in many of these cases. So, that's going to be a struggle, and we have to keep an eye on that. The, the other side of that, too, is that a lot of our subs, we're, we're trying to ascertain how many are coming back, and that's been a group that's, that's kind of been questionable about how many we're going to get back. I will say there are bus drivers, most of them are trying to come back. We've got a few that are, that are working out some health situations, but the majority of those are coming back to work pretty solid. And then, of course, we don't know what we don't know. As we get into this thing, and kids have to go out for 10 days and come back 10 days, or teachers go out and come back, teachers have got to be flexible and they got to be doing things they've never done. Principals got to be doing them, everybody, support staff. So, we just have to monitor that and see, you know, how are we overcoming these things as we go? This is, as we begin, we always say, this is what we're picking out the best of the worst situation. So, we, we've got to have the, the community behind us, we've got to have support of the community to work with us. I mean, it's, it's no longer a case of whether we're minutes behind on a bus route, or, you know, you know, something didn't happen on a field trip, or my kid didn't get the teacher they want. Now, we're just absolutely just trying to offer basic school, and, and that's what we got to understand. We're trying to get your child picked up, get them to school, offer them a service, get them home, priority one being safety. And it's new for everybody, and that's the reason why it's difficult and that there's 57 or more systems who have now totally gone Plan C and walked away from it because they just couldn't figure it out. So, like you guys have been, been saying about these people all day, they are doing a tremendous job, and a lot of people have basically said, this is just, the logistics and the timing of this thing is just too much of a monster to handle. We do have concerns, and we're monitoring those concerns. Bus delays, we, we may become, overcoming some of those, so, but there are options. You know, things happen out on the bus routes that we have to stop and deal with it as we go, so buses may be delayed, so just work with us as best we can on those. I think one of the bigger issues we're dealing with right now is that all the survey data we talked about earlier is basically about 60% of our staff, we know what's happening with. There's about 40% that have really not, not made any contact about what their intentions are. Again, I go back to saying that, you know, if you don't contact us, we're expecting you to fulfill your contract, come back to work as normal, like you would on any other year. We've sent out messages, we're trying to make phone calls. Everyone will be reporting back to work next week, Monday is an optional workday. Tuesday will be the first day that we actually see everybody per, in person, face-to-face, they have to be here. So, that's when we'll really get a good feeling for everything, and we'll see what kind of wild cards we don't know about, what happens then, and so, that's, that's a little worry on our behalf, because we're, we're trying to put together master schedules here, and, and not knowing what's going to happen is a little dangerous when we, when we get that final thing, so, you know, people may get schedule changes last minute, you know, we may not have schedules ready, we may have to delay a day or more, and, and that's what we're having to work towards, and we'll actually note that at the next board meeting, we'll have a, a pretty good handle on where we're at with that. Of course, the next slide is, you already heard about bus routes. Our major concern there is the EC program. We're struggling to get those routes for EC, and we'll have an update for you on Tuesday, that's, that's a big concern of ours. We, we're thinking PP, all the PPEV here, that we have to have to start, all the kits and everything for teachers, but if there's another delay or any kind of delay in delivery, that will be a dangerous situation for us, too, is getting all that out. Right now, we'll be delivering it over the weekends and trying to get it into rooms, and it will be down to hours before the beginning of the first day to have all that out. Storm has cost us some time, not just us planning and working with it, but, I mean, it literally shut down the county for a day and about a half of another day, took out internet, took out power, and we're still trying to deal with it in some cases. So, that, that just delayed everybody, it also delayed some setups. We're, we're hoping the contractors can get that back on point, especially at Toxer Elementary, trying to get the building ready, so we're working with them. So, just, everything right now is coming down to the wire to have it all prepared, ready to go, open the door on 17th. So, I say all that just to let the board, you know, really understand the whole picture. We are monitoring, 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 and we are shooting to open, but there is an op, there's several holes in that that we're trying to plug right now, and which I just talked about. And so, realistically, the, the two things we're kind of, the big picture items are, if at any time this process overloads the availability of the, the Pender Department of Health and Human Resources and affects the Health and Safety Services, the student staff, then Plan C may be recommended. We may need some time. Additionally, if all the previously presented logistical and time challenges occur and cannot be overcome, we may ask again for a delayed start of Plan C, and those are the things we're monitoring that I just laid out for you. So, those are the things we're struggling with, basically, that we were trying to come to the wire of getting done in the next two to three days. Are there any questions about any of that, board?
Do y'all have any other than?
Well, Cindy just answered a few questions, but um...
Sure.
Well, that would help.
No, I was just going to say, I knew that Cindy Fontana had some questions, and we've been having a little phone trouble because of the storm, I think, so, if you have them you want to ask for.
I do, and where she has, where she is currently, also, they are having storms passing by, so we've had a little bit of, she's been cut off several times.
Like we said earlier, we're lucky to have power in this building, we have other buildings that, that are out of power right this second.
Right. Cindy had asked, has anyone said anything about lessons being recorded for virtual parents who want to complete work with their children at home? After work?
I'm sorry, I was in transit, I don't know that I heard the question.
No problem. Cindy was wondering if we had talked about lessons being recorded for virtual parents who want to complete work with their children after work?
So, we have talked extensively about that. We needed, I think, I'd like to talk further with our attorneys, there were some questions about recording inside classrooms and what would be visible and available on the internet in terms of the students sitting in the room, and should there be something that would be recorded and then visible in perpetuity online? We, we're trying to negotiate that, we also, but have a desire at the high school level where we have students, especially in math, that will be missing two weeks at a time on remote learning, that we did want to try to be able to find a way to only have the teacher visible, so that's, that's something we're working through and trying to figure out a way to do that. The one thing I would say, though, for anybody, is that, I mentioned a lot of the work that's been done at 612, but our K-5 teachers have built some amazing resources and units that contain links to any number of already posted embedded videos that exist of those exact same skills that would be taught. They've even worked, and as we look to implement CSOW for our K-5, especially K-2, they've been able to design interactive activities, and I hate to say worksheets, but interactive lessons that would mimic what's going to happen, so they'll be able to actually go along with some of the same stuff. So, I think there's a lot that could be followed up, but the question of actual live recordings of something happening in a classroom is still something that we're trying to work through, whether that's something we could do without violating any issues.
And, let's see, do we have to vote on the staff, children, and PACES option? Do we have to vote on that Tuesday, or are we just going to go with this?
It's an information item for today. My understanding from Dr. Aiken is he will present it for the board as an action item, is presented for information to give you time to think about it and for him to flesh out everything more clearly prior to Tuesday's meeting.
That would be one option. If the board would be of interest and if it is permissible, I think our PACES staff, and I think our staff in general, would love to know if the board is okay with us beginning to pursue that route. So, I would defer partly to our wonderful attorney, to what's allowable, and to the board on what you would, how you would like to proceed.
Based on your agenda, it's an information item. If you would choose to make it an action item, that's...
We'd have to change your, we'd have to amend the agenda.
You'd have to amend the agenda. Now, you can, you can indicate a suggestion that, but I would delay any vote until Tuesday.
Okay.
That would be my advice.
We will use this time, though, to continue planning for either direction, so that whichever way the board goes, we're ready to implement immediately following a vote.
Sounds good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And while we're talking about what possibly may come up on Tuesday as far as a board vote, Dr. B will also be presenting what we talked about previously, is a fee structure for Chromebooks, so that we don't actually have to charge people upfront, that we discharge them when things happen. And we've mentioned that before, but I just, you're bringing up what might be voted on next week, and it was part of what he presented earlier. Mr. Chair, if there's no further questions, that concludes our presentation.
All right, the only one I've got, you, you sent an email about the, some USDA funding that's going.
Yes, sir. Mr. Tanner made reference to that earlier, that they haven't voted yet, but we've got all indications that that funding would not come, oh, actually, Mr. George made reference to it. That funding probably would not come through this year, and so, we'll be going back to more of our regular fee structure.
So, in other words, if it, unless that changes, I mean, that's not something that would come back later as a, it would just be an emergency type of situation, like a relief package or something, if they were to do it again, right?
I would get come back up, just they'd have to go back.
In other words, once it's been decided it's not going to happen later in the year, or unless it would be part of emergency legislation or something like that, right?
Until there's an appropriation of additional funds, you're correct, there would not be, there would not be an action taken now.
Yeah.
If the federal government sort chooses, they can appropriate funds if they see it necessary, as you said, Mr. Chair.
Okay. All right.
Dr. Aiken, can you elaborate more on this last comment you made about the Plan C?
Because I'm not digging this at all.
Yes, sir. If we run into, and we already have, we're running into some issues with a little bit of bus routing, obviously with EC students, based on the dates, and we're looking at some other issues would be the, the issues of scheduling, and right now, we feel like we can, we possibly could make that happen, but if we run into some issues when all the staff shows up on Tuesday, that we just don't know what we don't know yet when we get them all in. And at the bottom of it, the last statement was, as we continue to monitor what's going on, if we run into a situation where we don't have enough staff to supervise children, there's going to have to be an obvious recommendation to the board. And so, similar situation, if Department of Health and Human Services runs into a situation where they can't respond, if we get into a situation where we have enough cases and they can't do the tracing, they can't do the follow-up fast enough to be responsive in a safe way, then we would have to come back to the board and make some suggestions or recommendations.
But as of right now, there's no recommendation to go to Plan C?
No, sir.
When did, when did the governor tell us, when did the NCDPI tell us to start working on three different scenarios? Wasn't it back in early June?
Off the top of my head, I don't know exactly that date.
And then, we have a deadline to submit tentative plans to, to them in July?
There was a, there's a requirement for a digital learning plan. Dr. Aiken, you remember that date?
Is it July 20th? I remember perfectly, 20th to 21st, when we submitted what that would be, that we were talking about Plan C.
I have nothing else, Chair.
One thing with, let's go back to the daycare for a minute that we talked about for teachers. They will be going back to work before we meet again. Is there anything that we need to do to figure out something on that, definitely?
They'll be back next week, but they'll be, there won't be any students in the building. So, we have allowed them to bring their students with them to work.
Okay. All right, that's all I've got. Anybody? Ken or Cindy, any more questions?
No, I don't have any question.
Okay. All right. Anybody else?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All right, Mr. Smith has made a motion. Ms. Burns has made a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 All right, unanimous, thank you.